The February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five work session minutes, please. All right, and a second. If there's no discussion, everybody, please vote. Motion has passed. And I am now going to turn over the work session to our MARTA GM, Colleen Greenwood.
Thank you, Chair. I had two items on the report this morning. One is a presentation about a transit system for all, and the other is the more MARTA City of Atlanta assessment results by KPMG. So firstly, on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, you'll recall that during our board committee meetings, Mayor Dickens made the request to address the board as board members were discussing status of the permits for five points. That day, we confirmed with the mayor's office that the mayor would indeed address the board today on the topic of a transit system for all. And so without further delay, I'd like to introduce Mayor Andre Dickens.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, CEO Greenwood, and to you, Chairwoman Ayd, to all of these illustrious board members here. Good to see all of you. And to all the community members that's here, especially my cabinet members and my leaders that are with me today. We know that time is of the essence, and we're not going to take all day, but we have myself and a couple of speakers will come up. Thank you for this time today and for your continued service to our city and this entire region. I came before you not, I come before you today not just as Atlanta's mayor, but as a partner in ensuring that MARTA fulfills its promise to the people who depend on it every single day. Over the past few months, we have seen and heard of growing concerns and disputes regarding some plans, MARTA's plans and funding and execution of key transit projects. These concerns are not just about dollars and about contracts, but they are about the promises made to the people of Atlanta who voted for expanded and improved transit services. They are about the trust our residents place in MARTA to deliver efficient, reliable, and equitable transportation solutions. And so today, we're going to just have plain talk. I didn't, this is my first time actually coming before the MARTA Board as mayor. I haven't received an invitation, so I'm coming now. So coming now to have the talk that we meet a lot, we talk a lot in my office or in other places. And so a lot has been said that I want to make sure is in the light of day and very public. So right now, our transit system does face some serious challenges. It's a great transit system, but it faces some challenges. Ridership remains below pre-pandemic levels, and safety concerns, whether real or perceived, are discouraging some people from using MARTA. Riders continue to experience long and unprecedented wait times, particularly on our bus network, and which is unacceptable for those who depend on it every day to have access to education, to jobs, and to essential services. So to truly move MARTA forward, we must make and have decisive actions on three key areas. Number one, investing in transit-oriented communities. TOD, Transit-Oriented Development, but transit-oriented communities. A thriving transit system is more than just buses and trains. It's about creating walkable, connected communities where people can live, work, and play near high-quality transit. MARTA has a substantial amount of high-value real estate holdings that can be leveraged to accomplish this. MARTA must be more aggressive in leveraging its real estate assets to drive equitable growth through transit-oriented communities. We need to ensure that our stations serve as hubs of economic activity, of housing, and retail that benefits all of Atlanta. And my ask is that MARTA partners with the City of Atlanta to advance new developments on at least two MARTA-owned properties by the end of this year, twenty twenty-five. Again, we ask that MARTA partner with the City of Atlanta to advance two new developments at MARTA-owned property by the end of twenty twenty-five and to begin to do more in twenty twenty-six. That was number one, investing in transit-oriented communities. Number two is accelerating the implementation of more MARTA projects. The more MARTA plan was a promise to the people of Atlanta, and we cannot allow unnecessary delays to derail critical projects. Our residents voted for expanded service, including light rail, bus rapid transit, and station improvements. I understand that costs have soared in the last few years due to pandemic, due to supply chain, and other things. So if we need to adjust those project prioritizations, let's do so. Let's sit down and do so and do it together. Every day that we delay, projects continue to cost more. So I ask you to work with us to finalize a plan, and we must accelerate the implementation timeline to ensure that these projects are delivered on time and within budget. Thirdly, we have to renegotiate our IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Atlanta and MARTA. It has become clear that the current IGA between the City of Atlanta and MARTA needs to be revisited to ensure greater accountability, transparency, and alignment with the city's transportation priorities. We must establish a framework that allows for better oversight, clearer reporting, and a stronger partnership between our agencies. Our shared goal should be a transit system that truly serves all Atlantans, especially those who are transit-dependent, and delivers on the investments that voters have already approved. So to accomplish this, I am asking that MARTA staff, MARTA Board, MARTA leadership to work with the City of Atlanta to execute a new IGA in the next one hundred eighty days. That's plenty of time, six months, for us to work on this together. So lastly, before I turn it over to my two colleagues, lastly, allow me to address two ongoing issues that further impede our ability to work together easily. First is Five Points. We are not holding up any permits for the Five Point Station. Let me say that clearly. I've heard it. I've heard the chatter. I've even heard it in meetings. City of Atlanta is not holding up any permits for Five Points. We never have. My COO, Lashandra Burks, is here today, and she will provide a detailed accounting of the permitting process. But let me be clear. We want this project to move forward and start ASAP, and anyone who has told you that we are holding up any permits is simply lying to you. Anyone insinuating, anyone telling you that, written or verbal, is lying to you. We do not desire to hold up permits for the critical hub of Five Point Station. Lastly, we want to talk about the audit. Now, I understand that there was just an AJC report about it, Atlanta Journal-Constitution, and it was a meeting with Colleen about the permit, about the audit. Now, we just got the audit, the KPMG audit, I would say thirty hours ago. We haven't had it, thirty-six hours ago. Haven't had it long enough to really go through it at all. But I want you to hear this directly from me so we can spare ourselves the suspense. When we thumb through it, what KPMG did was not an audit. It was a review of the allocation process for more MARTA. I know it. KPMG knows it. And so does this administration of MARTA. You know it. And so I reject the financial conclusion in this report and stand by the findings of the original audit that was conducted, and I am committed to working on a feasible solution to this issue. However, this new so-called audit is a slap in the face to all of the Atlanta taxpayers that have desired to see these projects move forward and to provide overwhelmingly the majority of funds that are needed for this organization. These Atlanta voters, they provide the funding overwhelmingly, the larger portion, to this organization. And so they deserve better than an audit to get another almost audit. So I urge this board to prioritize collaboration with the City of Atlanta, with community stakeholders, and most importantly, with the riders who depend on MARTA every single day. And so we must work together to resolve our differences, refocus on the shared goals that we all have, and ensure that transit improvements move forward efficiently and effectively. And MARTA is, again, a partner in this, and we want you to continue to be a pillar of mobility, of economic opportunity, and sustainability for the City of Atlanta. And so let's continue to recommit ourselves to working together in good faith to deliver the world-class transit system that our city deserves. I don't go to the media often to talk about my MARTA stuff that we have going on. I just meet with Colleen or have phone calls with board members. I don't need this to play out in the press any longer. I don't need politics. I got enough of that. What I want is a transit system that works for everyone. And so I'm going to have my colleagues to come up. First is going to be the COO of Atlanta, Lashandra Burks. She's going to talk very clearly, specifically, and quickly about permitting at Five Points. So you board members can hear it from Atlanta. You'll be able to hear it from the COO, and you'll know where we stand on this. And it may counter some of the things that you might have either heard or caught wind of from somewhere that wasn't the source. Atlanta will be the source on this one. COO Burks.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to Madam Chair and members of the MARTA Board. As stated by Mayor Dickens, my name is Lashandra Burks, and I serve as the Chief Operating Officer for the City of Atlanta. And we have been asked by our mayor to come before you and give you a quick update, won't hold you too long, just on where we are on the Five Points Permit specifically for MARTA. And I will say, this is one that has been near and dear to the mayor's heart as well, so much so that our teams meet weekly so that I can provide him update weeklys on where we are in this process. So right before you, real quick, is our permitting process. I call it a maze sometimes, and that's exactly, for some people, what it is. And so as a result, what we wanted to do in partnering with MARTA was schedule various collaborative meetings to make sure that that maze did not impede the process for MARTA submitting their permit for Five Points. As you can see here, we have held four collaborative meetings with the MARTA team. The dates are there. But I want to spend some time, a little bit, on the March sixteenth collaborative meeting, which that one was very instrumental because we had it here at MARTA headquarters, where we had an opportunity to review our permit process. Not only that, we discussed the special administrative permit waiver process with the team, and we also left here, went over to Five Points, and did a walkthrough. Again, that was on March, May sixteenth, I'm sorry. And then you will also see where, unfortunately, the MARTA staff canceled seven of our collaborative meetings, and you will see the dates there. So let me talk very specifically about the permits that are required for Five Point Station. There are seven categories of permits you'll see, and I won't go through this, but you'll see from P1, P2, P3, P4, P5, ATL-DOT permits, as well as needing a permit for Ashby Station for your relocation. So as a result of some of our collaborative meetings, we received a request from MARTA to submit to us a document via email for us to do a courtesy review. And that courtesy review was for P5, which is the building and construction of Five Point Station. We received that email on August the thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, worked back and forth with MARTA because the link did not work. And finally, by nine twelve twenty twenty-four, and with support from many of our staff in City Hall, from our IT staff, we were able to get the link uploaded right from MARTA and review seven hundred and ninety-nine pages worth of documents. On eleven sixteen twenty twenty-four, we provided MARTA back seventy-one comments from the new construction review that they asked us to do. So now I'll quickly walk you through where we are. Ashby Station timeline, as you can see here, on eleven twenty twenty-four is when we actually received the official application from MARTA in our Acela system for Ashby Station. We then began to engage with staff. We realized that the staff had submitted all of the attachments incorrectly. We personally had a staff member from our building's permit office to sit on the phone and walk the MARTA staff through how to upload each of those attachments because we wanted to make sure we had everything we needed. You will also see on January tenth, and all this can be seen in Acela, that we waived the permit fees, which is what we do for MARTA. I know there's been a lot of talk about permit fees. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. But I also want to go to take you to March. As of today, we have received, we sent out comments. What we have received back is revisions on several of them. However, we still have six outstanding reviews that need to be turned into the City of Atlanta before we can issue the Ashby Station permit. Now, let's go specifically to the Five Points. And I'm talking about Five Points demolition permit, which is P1 and P2. Those are the only two that we have received from MARTA's Five Point Station. We officially received in Acela the upload on November twelfth. And what we realized in our discussions on five sixteen twenty twenty-four is that the SAP waiver request was not attached to the application. So we worked with MARTA to get that done. That was included on December fourth of twenty twenty-four. If you will, let's jump over to January twenty twenty-five. On January fifteenth, we did receive a letter from MARTA's outside council asking us to do the SAP waiver. We realized, our staff realized right away, that the waiver was for the demolition, but not a request for the actual construction. So we sent an email back asking that it both be included on a letter. We received that letter back on one twenty-four, and no, we received it back on one fifteen, and on one sixteen, one day later, we submitted that waiver along with the waived fees. After that, MARTA then submitted correctly on January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five, January fourth of twenty twenty-five, we received the correct application for P1 and P2, which is the demolition of the MARTA Five Points Train Station. So we started this process on November twelfth of twenty twenty-four. We finally got all the correct documents. And later on, in January of this year, and I would like to say, just on yesterday, we received all of the required documents needed for the Five Points demolition permit for P1 and P2. And as of this morning, that permit has been issued to MARTA. So here goes the thing around us taking, comparing the audit with tying it to the actual permits. We haven't resolved the audit issue, but as of this morning, you have received your permit for the demolition of the canopy at Five Point. Just a couple of important notes before I turn it over to my colleague Courtney English or back to the mayor. As we walk through this, as I stated, you have now your demolition permits, which is P1 and P2. Demolition permits expire in sixty calendar days, sixty days. What we have not received is the final documents for the Ashby Station. We still have six outstanding comments on Ashby. You can't even begin demolition at Five Points until you move your staff to Ashby. So without the Ashby demolition, without the Ashby permit, you cannot begin demolition on Five Points, knowing that it will expire in sixty days. We still have not received applications in Acela for P3, P4, or P5. That is your civil site work, your actual construction of your walls, and your canopy. And we have not received the completed applications that are needed in order to receive a permit from ATL-DOT. So of the seven items that you need in order to have permits for Five Points to move forward quickly and in order, you have only submitted all the required documents for two of them. And I think that is important to realize. If you start the demolition and you haven't even submitted the application for the construction, what will happen? Will the canopy just remain open? We know that that is not an option. And so I wanted to come today because I want to thank our staff, who have spent many hours, nights, and weekends, working alongside your staff to make sure that what is needed for these permits and what is required by the city charter has been received, received properly, and then we can actually execute the permit. I will also, lastly, want to clear up the information around fees, which we've read a lot about. Specifically, the permit fee for this project, for the demolition, P1 and P2 totaled right at about four hundred-plus thousand dollars. We have seen copies of a check from Skanska that says the city was paid that money. If you go into our Acela document, or even on the public view, you will see where we waived your fees. The address on the check that was sent to the city from Skanska says Suite 2900. Unfortunately, we do not have a Suite 2900 in City Hall. Our Office of Buildings is located on the third floor. We accept cash on the first floor at our cashier's window, and we highly encourage people to pay any permit fees online. But if you look in Acela, you will see when the staff received all the appropriate documentation and the permit was ready to be issued, we waived the fees for the permit as we always do with MARTA. That is the end of my presentation, and I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you for that, Ms. Burks. I will, at the end, allow, if you had any questions directly for her, we're going to get with Courtney English in a second. Ordinarily, board members, you wouldn't get into these details of permits and dates and times. It's not what board members are really here for, and definitely not the public. But, and we work very hard every day working on these things. A significant portion of the meeting that occurs between this senior leadership team every single week is MARTA. We don't, we talk about this stuff all the time because we want to see it move forward. So I'm going to go back to my statement. Anyone that told you that we were holding or delaying permits was lying to you. She just laid out the timeline, and I want you to be clear about that timeline. And we can email that to you, circulate it, so you can have that list of things and the caution around, now you have sixty days to deliver upon Ashby Station outstanding documents when it has taken this long to get to that point. So that is, this is all grunt work that now the mayor of Atlanta, the COO, and others had to come to the MARTA meeting to clear up because so much media, so much politics time has been used on this. But now you got the truth. Now, I bring up Courtney English. I can talk about things that we actually want to talk about, which is long-term vision and things around how to make sure transit works for everyone in Atlanta. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor, Chairwoman Ayd, members of the board, CEO Greenwood. It's certainly a pleasure to be with you all this morning. Just wanted to share a little bit about the mayor's broad vision for not just transit in Atlanta, but building in Atlanta that works for everyone. And so we have a short deck. I'll try to get through it as fast as humanly possible. I believe MARTA administration has already seen it, as well as the representatives for Atlanta's, for Atlanta on the MARTA Board. Am I working this now? Oh, y'all might have to switch it back. Sorry about that. Yes, the first one we add up. All right, diving right in. So the mayor's broad strategic vision for the entire administration is to make Atlanta the best place in the country to raise a child, to make the City of Atlanta the best place in the country to raise a child. How do we get there? In order for us to achieve that vision, we have to deal with some harsh truths in the City of Atlanta. We got to deal with some harsh truths. Just last week, something happened again that is becoming too routine in the City of Atlanta. Atlanta was rated fifty out of fifty for income mobility, or lack thereof, of major southern cities in the country. Here's what that looks like. If you draw a dotted line from northwest Atlanta to southeast Atlanta, that line is going to begin to paint a very, very clear picture about inequality in Atlanta and about what it means, what it impacts. The folks usually on the northern end of that line are mostly wealthy or certainly of a higher income bracket than the folks on the south. Now, the folks below that line, it's a mixed income, but it's certainly where the concentration of poverty in the City of Atlanta resides. The folks above that line are mostly our white neighbors, and the folks below that line are mostly our African-American neighbors and our people of color. The chart to the right shows you very clearly, Atlanta, unfortunately, is one of the most segregated cities in America in terms of where folks live, one of the most segregated cities in America. Now, we come together, sure, and for meetings and for gatherings and all that kind of stuff. But in terms of where folks actually live, we are, in fact, unfortunately, very segregated. That segregation comes at a price. The thing I want you to hold in your mind is this dotted line. I want you to hold another thing in your mind. That segregation comes with a price. The third thing I'll say is simply that because that these systems or this kind of segregation did not happen by accident. It was done intentionally. Over a course of decades, hundreds of years, that have led or was caused by policies of redlining, that have concentrated folks in certain parts of the community. Here's what it means for people. If you look at the number of kids living in poverty, you can clearly see a disparity between the folks on the top and the folks on the bottom. If you look at high school completion, there's another disparity. We got more folks graduating from high school. If you look at the folks who are uninsured, there are more folks below that line who are uninsured. If you look at folks who have access to internet access, there are more folks who have access to internet access above that line. If you look at rent burdened households, there are more folks who are rent burdened below that line than there are on top of that line. If you look at healthcare and diabetes, there are more folks who are suffering from diabetes below that line than on top of it. Any statistic, any statistic that you can think about, healthcare, education, crime, says the exact same thing about our city. We could do something about it. Probably the most damning stat of all is our life expectancy gap. From bankhead to buckhead, or literally across that line, there's almost a twenty-year life expectancy gap for folks living above that line than folks living below it. So we're talking about people's actual lives and the amount of time that they spend on this earth with their loved ones. The bottom left-hand chart shows you Atlanta's average, seventy-six point two years. You can clearly see that the folks who live below that line are well below Atlanta's average. That's the cost of this kind of inequity. Moving right along. So the mayor's got a goal to address this, or a broad goal to address this, to make Atlanta the best place in the country to raise a child. We believe in order to make that vision a reality, we have to concentrate on our neighborhoods. We believe that the neighborhood is the chief engine of change inside of our cities. We believe that because our neighborhoods were intentionally segregated, intentionally starved of investment, intentionally starved of amenities, we have to apply intention to correct those types of mishaps. So we've highlighted seven key areas in the city that we've targeted for deep and concentrated intervention. The entirety of, I'm from Atlanta, so I still say bankhead, but for our fancy folks, we'll say Hollowell Highway. So for the entirety of the Hollowell Corridor, going all the way from North Side Drive to the river, the entirety of the Campbellton Road Corridor, going from Ralph David Avenue all the way to the edge of the city, and of course downtown Atlanta, which is a major strategic focus for everybody who calls the city home, and Thomasville Heights, the poorest places in, the poorest census tract in the entire state of Georgia, wasn't in South Georgia, was anywhere in rural Georgia. It was fifteen minutes away from our state Capitol, fifteen minutes away from Atlanta City Hall, Thomasville Heights. Also happened to be the home of the Lewis Performing School in the APS for three consecutive years. That doesn't happen by accident. The city owns or controls one hundred and twenty-one acres of land in Thomasville Heights, as we do in these other major corridors. So we're going to do a deep dive on each one of these places, but we need transit help to make it happen. As the mayor would say, Atlanta is absolutely a group project. MARTA has participated in the past on the mayor's affordable housing strike force. This just gives you an inkling of the amount of housing activity, affordable housing activity, because we know that affordable housing is a cornerstone of a high-quality, healthy, whole neighborhood that allows people to work their way up the economic ladder. We're well on our way of achieving the mayor's ambitious goal of building, preserving twenty thousand units of affordable housing over an eight-year period with sixty-five hundred units that have already been developed with another forty-five units, forty-five hundred units on the way. Now, we face, when it comes to turning to transit specifically, y'all have heard this, I'm sure, before. The mayor just mentioned it previously, but we are in a bit of a tight spot when it comes to this ridership issue. Without intervention, we believe that we will enter essentially a doom loop, where we've got low fare revenues, because we have low ridership, the revenues from fares will decrease, which leads to cuts in transit services, which also leads to ridership decreases. And that loop will continue on and on and on. Here's what ridership looks like year by year, by mode. Heavy rail is going down, bus ridership is going down. But the thing, the line I want you to focus on is the light blue line. This is happening in a time where the City of Atlanta's metro Atlanta population is actually exploding. So that blue line represents what our population is doing versus what's actually happening with MARTA ridership. So long-winded way of saying, people are choosing Atlanta. People are choosing the metro area, and without a partner to work with that addresses these And without a partner to work with that addresses these issues, and we're going to get into that just a second briefly, we will be creating a car-dependent society because for whatever reason, folks are necessarily choosing our transit system. Doesn't have to be that way, we could do something about it. Moving from the vicious cycle that we just talked about to a virtuous cycle, we believe that has four key components. One is investing in the infill stations that we've talked about. Two is transit-oriented communities, strategically located, transit-oriented developments that create the community around the station, utilizing MARTA-owned land, utilizing other publicly-owned land. What you are building in when you do this is you're building in your customer base. You're building in riders that will ultimately use your system. And when you do it correctly and enough, you actually reverse a lot of the inequitable trends that we talked about earlier. Of course, you all are going through a bus network redesign. Of course, we've talked a lot about BRT. We do believe that this map, we're going to spend a little bit of time here because this map looks a little bit different than the maps you've seen before. And number four is first and last mile connectivity. What this map ultimately represents is what we believe will create a transit system that works for all. So it takes the existing plan routes and expands them. So what you see here ultimately, of course, you've got the Bus Strip Transit line on Campbellton Road on your bottom left, that's already denoted in the teal color. You've got the ART line going down Metropolitan in the dotted blue line. You've got the existing Bus Strip Transit line from Summer Hill. And then if you see, there's a spur that expands from the Summer Hill BRT line down to what? Thomasville Heights. Thomasville Heights, again, is an area that we're going to deeply focus on. If you look at the top left, the corridor that we talked about, that's Hollowell Highway or Bankhead. We do want to expand Bus Strip Transit going across town, literally all the way, perhaps from Pont City Market all the way down to the edge of the city, down to Bankhead, or at least down to the born-home facility where just last week, we broke ground on 2,000 units of housing. We could talk in-depth about all of the activity that is taking place across these corridors. So long-winded way of saying, we want to build transit or we want to work with you to build transit as these developments come online. There's some other areas of the map that are here, too. We want to fix the existing streetcar. We do want to extend, extend the streetcar to the Beltline. And then there's one, one area that we've never said before and never talked about it. With the mayor's permission, I'll say the thing. We do, we are committed to building rail on the Beltline. We are committed to building rail on the Beltline. However, not in the form that has been previously discussed. We want to concentrate those resources, again, on fixing the existing streetcar, extending it to the Beltline, but not necessarily on the Beltline. Instead, we have identified a very specific node. We do have city-owned right-of-way to begin construction of rail on the Beltline on the South Side corridor. And that is the trail, that's represented by the large blue, I'm sorry, large purple line on the bottom there. The last thing I'll mention on this chart is a potential extension of the streetcar going west to the AUC as well. And so you will be receiving all of this information in the appropriate form, which is the intergovernmental task force that we have with MARTA. We will be making these formal requests to coincide with the existing infill stations. Not going to spend too much time here. We talked, we could talk all day long about why these infill stations are absolutely important. We talked about transit-oriented communities. This just gives you an idea of the number of units right now, without even doing a deep dive, projected units that you can get from each one of these potential transit one-end developments. 500 at Art Center, 500 plus at Bankhead, AG Homes between 600 and 800, North Avenue, Oakland City. And then there are some additional opportunities next to where the infill stations themselves will be. We talked a lot about bus network redesign, not going to spend much time there. First and last mile connectivity. What this ultimately shows you is that if and when we create this additional transit network, this overlays our trails, our green spaces and where our bike lanes are and/or where they will be. And so in addition to building the transit-oriented communities, when we execute this particular plan, this is how it connects to all of these different modalities of transportation. Again, this helps building and ridership because we're getting more people to MARTA stations faster. Also helps increase our equity because we are attracting more density into underserved areas. We talked a lot about the Beltline. This is just giving you a deeper dive on that. Won't spend any time there. The map I want you to focus on here really quickly is what the South Side Trail or Beltline on the South Side could potentially look like. Essentially, there are a variety of nodes of activity that are already occurring on the South Side Trail. And by creating rail in this particular area, we take advantage of those nodes, not just for folks who look at the Beltline like an amenity, but also we give access to folks who are transit-dependent to these existing nodes of commerce, existing or planned nodes of commerce. One is anchored by Glenwood on the far right-hand side and then anchored by, of course, Murphy's Crossing, which we think will be one of the most transformational real estate development, affordable housing developments in the city of Atlanta's history, actually. Last thing I'll say, and now I'll be quiet. A way, one way of thinking about urbanism is a concept called the 15-minute city. It is what it sounds like. Everything's 15 minutes away or every resident lives within 15 minutes of amenities, of grocery, of transit, so on and so forth. Our best opportunity to create the 15-minute city is leveraging the existing Beltline. Essentially, the Beltline is 15 minutes away from everywhere else in the city because of how it's designed. And if you live on the Beltline, there's enough activity already existing where we can create that 15-minute reality or those 15-minute connection points to amenities. We believe when we do this, we will change the trajectory of the face of the city of Atlanta. We will give all Atlantas access to live, work, play amenities. We can fix all of those horrible stats that we talked about previously. And so ultimately, that's what this plan is designed to do. It's not just a transit plan, but it's an equity plan. It's a plan to close those longstanding gaps and ultimately make Atlanta the best place in the country to raise a child. And so look forward to talking with you more about that. Look forward to your partnership and continuing the work that you all do on behalf of all of the folks who ride MARTA, but those specifically in the city of Atlanta. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you all for allowing us to express those ideals and targets for the city of Atlanta. Thank you for listening to Ms. Burks talk about the Five Point Station and what we want to help you and us and the city of Atlanta achieve there. We are going to be going out and around the community and talking with MARTA and others about some of the things that were shown there. We wouldn't have, we would have probably rolled this out a little, you know, throughout the next couple of weeks and months, but because we were coming here for this presentation, we thought, go ahead on and reveal some of the thoughts we have around the Atlanta Beltline. We're still open to all kinds of inputs from everybody, but light rail being on the Beltline to connect the heavy rail at MARTA at the Murphy's Crossing Station, getting you all around to the east side and then growing from there. Because South Side communities have, are the most, they have the most without cars and the most transit-dependent. And we want to make sure they have the most access the quickest as we can. And a number of other factors that we'll put in there. The infill stations are incredibly important to us. We'd like to partner with you on that. The infill stations get heavy rail to the Beltline, to these nodes that allow people to be able to have the amenities that they need quickly. So all of this, I can come back often, come back again. We meet all the time. My team talks about MARTA at least once a week for about 30 minutes. And these are, this is the Chief of Staff, the COO, the Senior Policy Officer, the Chief Policy Officer and Senior Advisor, as well as the Chief Strategy Officer, who is the lucky one out of us, he's on vacation this week, Peter Amen. But all of us and as well as our Commissioner of Atlanta DOT, we talk about MARTA all the time. We are engaged, we are committed, we're partners. And we want to remain partners. And thank you for delivering on the hopes and dreams of people to be able to get to where they're going in life via transit. I appreciate you. We can stand for questions or you can tell us you got a meeting to run.
I, thank you so much, Mayor, and to your team. I do believe we have some questions from the board. So I will start with Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Dickens.
Either I'm tall or this thing is a...
Hypothetically, I'm also short. So I think we're meeting in the middle. And thank you, number one, for coming down and speaking to us. I think it's helpful for us to have this discussion and continue our relationship. I've really got some kind of more specific questions about the permitting process, and I'm certainly not suggesting that you don't know, but they might be better directed because it was Ms. Burks' presentation.
She definitely knows more than me.
Thanks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Powers.
It might, I know that the slides were up. When we talk about those collaborative meetings, just so we're clear, the collaborative meetings are to walk through the permit process, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I had the opportunity as the current chair last year to sit in on the July 3 meeting where there was the discussion about 9A reduced and the current pause. And then I believe we can agree that there was some discussion in November where in between there, CEO Greenwood and the mayor had several conversations and managed to come to an agreement about 9A reduced going forward with some changes about the pedestrian access. When you talk about the seven collaborative meetings that were canceled in between there, that was during that pause, right?
It was, but those meetings were also used for our staff and MARTA staff to understand the permitting process, no matter which design we were going with.
And to submit a permit, I mean, we have to agree on a design first, though, right?
Well, the only ones you've submitted is the demolition. So that was, you know, partly a part of it. So it was to go through all the seven requirements that were needed.
So I want to be clear going forward. It's my understanding, based on conversations with our legal counsel, that we are immune from a zoning requirement when we are a government agency conducting government business. Why then was there the requirement that we submit a waiver to your municipal zoning code?
So it was a requirement based on the location. We've talked a little bit about, you all didn't have to do it for Summer Hill. Summer Hill has a different zoning than downtown. And because of the zoning area in downtown, it is required that on file, we have a request for the waiver. And as you see, once we got the correct waiver, we actually issued it the very next day. So it is what we require based on the zoning for the area that you're working in. That area required at Summer Hill did not.
And I'm, maybe you can just help me. I'm looking at your special application permit zoning code and I see nothing mentioned with when to request a waiver and when it's exempted. And I know under state law, we're exempted. So can you tell us specifically for edification of our legal team going forward with Ashby, where we are subject to that under state law and where the exemption is listed in the code?
You actually have it for Ashby? That is one of the things that you already have for Ashby. And what we do in our collaborative meetings is talk project by project. And as I stated at the one on May 16th, we specifically went through with the staff the process for the special administrative permit waiver.
Okay. Where is it in the code, though, because we're immune, that we need to submit that? Just so we know going forward.
Well, the collaborative meetings will help. And so if you don't understand the zoning in each of the neighborhoods that you may be working in, you may not see it specifically, which is why the collaborative meetings are important. And it probably best not to cancel seven of them. And so if you're at, if you're at the meetings that are scheduled and participating, those are the best places to be able to ask all those questions to get clarity.
Well, I guess my clarity question is, if state law says we don't have to, regardless of zoning, can you just point us to the law that says we do?
I can't point you to the law right now. I'm not an attorney. I'll let our attorney talk with your attorney, Mr. Hott, as they do often. But what I can tell you is that we have been very clear with our zoning office on every project that MARTA has on when this waiver is needed and when it is not.
As it relates to the fees, and I appreciate the statement that, you know, we're not subject to fees. We had a board meeting, a committee meeting, I believe, Thursday, the 28th. And we were informed by Mr. Greenwood about the fee situation then. Of course, I have looked since then on your system and we were issued a new invoice post the city's statement that we understand that y'all don't owe it. And we were issued a new invoice that was present on March 5th. So from here on out, are we just to ignore those when those new invoices occur since we're not subject to fees? And maybe that's just your, maybe that's how you internally calculate and it just shows up on the public.
So let me explain how that worked, which was also explained in the collaborative meeting. The way a seller works when it, as it's set up, when anyone submits an application the appropriate way, it will show you the fee for that application. Because it is a MARTA project, the staff goes in and they will waive the fee. The system will automatically create the fee and the invoice and the staff goes in and waives those fees. And you can see that in a seller, the date that the staff goes in and waives those fees.
And so as of today, those are waived, I think, is what I understood.
Absolutely. We actually, after you all provided a copy of the check to the AJC on yesterday, we also provided them the screenshot in a seller that has been showing since we received the correct information in the system in January that those fees are waived.
And then I guess my final question right now, and it's been stated that they weren't tied to the audit, but, you know, we all read the paper and we read it this morning and some of us are present and have read the PGC meeting minutes. When the statement was made that these two go hand in hand, was that the case in December?
And so let me say this about the PGC meetings. And I hope you saw my comments also in the article this morning, which says, "Those aren't minutes, they're notes." Because we didn't start voting on them until January. And we did that as a result of us realizing that the notes are not always consistent with the meeting. What we do know is that the notes come to MARTA for a review a week in advance of the PGC meetings. And then they were being sent to the city the day of or the day before of the PGC meeting, not giving us an opportunity to review them. So what we now have in place is those notes come to us the same time they go to MARTA. And then we actually discuss them, have an opportunity to send back changes. And that came as a result of the notes, not the minutes, from the December meeting.
What was it said?
Not, all of what was in the notes is not all that was said in the meeting.
Okay, then what was said?
What I remember from December 18th, and we're now in March, and we talk about MARTA weekly, if not daily, I do daily with the team, weekly with this team, is we talked about the importance of making sure that we continue to talk about the audit just as much as we talk about the actual permit. And what you will see in the next coming-up meeting is where I specifically asked if we could include one of the agenda so that it is very clear how they are separated, is a conversation around the audit in which your CEO actually said, "We'll look at that one."
Are you requesting that we do something about it? Are you requesting that we hold permits because we don't agree with the audit? Is that your, are you, I'd like to ask a question so you can ask me a question. Would you like us to hold permits based on this audit that we disagree with?
No, I'm understanding that 13 are still outstanding. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear instead of reading it from each other in the AJC, that if they're not tied, they're not tied and we've got 60 days before ours expires.
Absolutely. And they can't be tied if we issued the one today, once we got all the information in yesterday.
Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dret? Oh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak?
I'll stand and wait for the next question.
I think if you go, I think this is the presentation, Courtney, that you did. Can you go back to show me exactly where you're thinking that rail on the Beltline should be considered? It was hard, when you said that, it was a smaller map.
Well, I'll start it and then... So I'm a fan of light rail on the Beltline. I always have been. It's always been my interest since someone that heard about the Beltline from the very beginning. And the hope is that one day, you know, more rail can be put on the Beltline. Our short-term look at this is, how do we start this process? We have, and I don't want to give the news that Clyde Higgs, the CEO of the Beltline, is going to be, you know, rolling out to you, rolling out to others soon. But the thought is that, we got two consultants that gave us back some data and some needs and some ideas about the Beltline. These are two independent consultants. And we think that the Beltline in its initial form is going to be multimodal. There will be some places where there's light rail and there'll be some places where there's other types of transit in the short term. Because it takes so long to build out 22 miles of a loop and certain parts of it are already extremely dense with a lot of activity, a lot of walk... a lot of walking, a lot of commercial nodes, a lot of restaurants, a lot of this. There's a lot of disruption that will happen if you try to do it all at once. But then, there are some areas that are open for...you can, you know, quickly deliver, and these are actually aligned with the areas that have more rider dependency, more need for public transit. And so, we're looking at coming to the public to say, "We think that the South Side Trail with Murphy's Crossing, Murphy Crossing being an infield station for MARTA that is right there on the Belt Line." So, Murphy Crossing would be a transit-oriented community with a Belt Line Transit Station, a MARTA Transit Station, and retail, housing, and all of the above right there. And then, it'll take you around to Pittsburgh Yards, et cetera, all the way to Glenwood, which is, you know, a long stretch of Belt Line that a lot of people can get to. And that also, you see a node that'll come south of there. It'll connect to the Summer Hill BRT, as well as our ART for Cleveland Avenue and Metropolitan. So, that's that. And then, on the north side, where you see, you know, we'll have to take the streetcar to get to the Belt Line in the middle part. And then, also, the streetcar should go west. So, we'll be rolling this out and taking public opinions on it. And, you know, it's the Belt Line. So, it is literally...everybody's got an opinion about it. So, this is a little delicate matter to roll out here at the MARTA meeting, but this is how much of a partner we think you are. I mean, seriously, like, we thought about whether we should present this here or not. We came here to talk about, you know, Five Points Permits. We came here to talk about audit. We came here to talk about the vision. And once we got to the vision, we said we couldn't hold back the vision for MARTA and Belt Line intersect. Anything else?
All right, Ms. Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Scott.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well.
Quick question. I have two. You mentioned two MARTA-owned properties that you're interested in for the transit-oriented communities. And I appreciate that term. It's actually new use throughout the U.S. on some regard in regards to ACTA. So, I like that as opposed to TOD.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Which two properties?
Well, so, there's a number of properties, but the first two...so, I'll give you all of them. So, we want Murphy's Crossing, Murphy Crossing. We want Five Points. Five Points is actually considered to be a transit-oriented community because on that property, we also want to build, you know, right on the same adjacent property, we have land that MARTA owns that we'd like to be a partner in helping to bring that, to have housing on it as well. But then, Oakland City Station, which is right there, right the next station that you'll get to after West End Station, but with Murphy being the infield. So, we think that area as well. And then, what else you want to...you want to go all the way? Do you want to give it all? And then...you come back.
So, I think that the ultimate point here, aside from the very specific pieces that the mayor just gave, is that we've been able to build housing as fast as we have because we've leveraged our publicly owned land. So, candidly, the real answer is wherever you have dirt, we want to utilize that dirt to build those communities.
And when we build those communities, you're building riders. You're building riders that are rider...that are going to ride MARTA, take the Belt Line, et cetera. If you do it right at Murphy Crossing, you will build...literally, your riders will be in the bedrooms in the communities that are right above the transit.
Thank you. And that was one reason why I wanted to identify the properties that you had identified for 2025, knowing those are the priorities in moving forward into 2026, looking at others.
That would be great.
The other question is, you mentioned renegotiating the internal government agreement. So, have you identified, number one, where...who specifically with Atlanta we should be working with, and the process?
Well, I think, you know, I don't know the exact process. It's going to be one that requires us to work on a frequency together. I think it should be the CEO and the mayor. Of course, these are legal documents, so our law departments should be there at the table. Much of this is also financial, so our financial people should be at the table. So, I carry a lot of people with me, so we might have everybody at the table. But I think ultimately...and I'm...I think MARTA may want to look at a new IGA as well, and so do we. I talked to...I'm the chairman of the Atlanta Regional Commission, and some of the other member communities have also said to me separately that they're interested in some changes. So, I think you might find that there'd be a collective approach on changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Worthy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor's team. I just want to circle back to the audit comment real fast, and I want to candidly admit that I'm in the exact same boat y'all are. I haven't read it entirely. I haven't distilled it entirely. I got it probably about the same time you did. But I would like for us to go forward, perhaps with some board involvement, with your team and discussions in that. Because KPMG is a big four firm that audits Fortune 100, 400, 500 companies, including the company that I work for and multiple other companies in Atlanta. So, I want to distill it, but I would like for us to have some engagement at the board level with you and your team and try to reach some consensus there because I think dismissing it as not a full audit is maybe not the accurate statement on that.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Worthy. I appreciate that commentary. I respect KPMG. They are a big four, qualified, capable folks. The entity that did the original audit, Malden and Jenkins is as well. And I don't necessarily plan on having auditors come here and scrap it out, which auditors, you know, can, you know, fight in front of us the best. I think what it was is the scope of work. What the scope of work was for the auditors to do will lead an auditor to come to a certain set of conclusions versus the scope of work that we ask them to do. Malden and Jenkins is the same auditor that audits the city of Atlanta, audits the Cav County, and audits...who else? Ody, Malden and Jenkins, everybody, right? Yeah. Same auditor that's been auditing us for, you know, several years. And I think maybe even like the Belt Line or Best Atlanta. So, a lot of public entities are audited by Malden and Jenkins. And without guidance, huh? Yeah, 26 cities in Georgia. So, they're a big firm.
There's no doubt they're reputable. I know that, and I agree with you completely that I don't want auditors scrapping it out because it'll put us all asleep. But I do think that maybe our team and your team, with some board involvement and your senior team involvement, may need to scrap it out because there's got to be some truth in the middle there.
I think so. And I think that that's where, you know, most of this stuff lands is, you know, there's a question about the formula was really how some of this came about. The formula for calculating what was happening with the bus service during COVID and beyond. We were presenting a document from Malden and Jenkins that says $70 million is the missing funds from the More Marta Plan that should be reserved for More Marta but was used for the bus plan. And Malden and Jenkins stands by that still to this day. And KPMG was asked by, I think, Deborah Silcox and Maek Ok, you know, to do a different audit. And that auditor has said, "No, they only owe us $865,000." And that is woefully different than what we've been walking around with for a year. And now, you know, there's no rush on it.
Can we raise this slide? Can we raise this screen?
Yeah. I can't be the tallest person y'all have had behind this.
Thank you. Yeah, there we go. That's a...
Oh, yeah. And that is important to note, that KPMG doesn't actually call that an audit. They call it an assessment. So, you received an assessment that says you owe $865,000 to Atlanta, and there's an audit that says 70 million. And we'll have time for that. I do want the board to know this, so that this is clear. We don't believe that we need the 70 million to be moved over today. I like it. We always want our money. But if we had a timeline that said three...the next three months, we should talk this through, we don't believe that that's unreasonable. But we do need to put a timeline on it because at some point, we're going to need that money for these projects that we're talking about.
Anything else, Mr. Worthy? All right, I'm going to jump and let... Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to speak now or if you can wait till the end.
I can wait till the end. Thank you.
Mr. Fireson.
Yes, Mayor, I want to say thank you for coming here. I appreciate it. And I'm glad to see your team also. I hadn't seen them all together, myself personally, but I want to say thank you. And I want to just talk about this, the vision that you have for Atlanta, because I think that's relevant to the vision for this whole transportation system that we're talking about. And you mentioned the transit-oriented communities, and around that workforce housing is an important part of that. And I'm sure you're much aware that there are master plans now being considered for HE Homes. And right now, there's TOD development, TOC development around Kensington Station and as well as Indian Creek. And so, we're on board with that. I mean, I think that's really what we're trying to do, to expand this system, whether it's through rail, whether it's through the bus network, however we can to do that. And so, I just want to say thank you for sharing your vision. Thank you for coming out and being transparent with us about this and kind of putting some things, these questions away, all right?
Thank you. And I'm very...I love the drawings and the things I'm seeing at Indian Creek Station. It's not in Atlanta, but it's moving forward. That is phenomenal. I think that that community deserves that Kensington Station as well. Now, HE Homes is my station. That's five minutes from my house. You know, I go by that station daily. I ride that station. That's where I get on MARTA. The bus stop in front of my house on both sides, on both corners of my house is...it takes you to HE Homes. I'd be so glad when we do transit-oriented communities there, where we have, hopefully, to include a grocery store so I can shop in my own neighborhood. And I'm there for it, and I'm right there with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fireson. Ms. Hardage.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for coming today, and I don't want to take too much of your time. I know we're fringing on a lot of your time. I want to echo what Mr. Worthy said because I feel very strongly that we need to figure this audit out on both sides. I feel very strongly we need to...so, anything we can do from a MARTA board perspective to assist with that and move it forward quickly so that we can move forward past this little obstacle that's sitting in front of us, Holly would love that to happen, if that's possible. And I know that many of the MARTA board members would make ourselves available, if that's helpful. I don't know if it is or not. I'm not going to be one of those bean counters that can help you much with the money, but I'll certainly help in any way I can.
Thank you.
And then, secondly, when you talk about an intergovernmental agreement, I just want to...I think I'm right in saying this. We have attorneys that can help us, but that affects us through the MARTA Act. So, anytime we go into intergovernmental agreements, am I correct, that then we have to go back and ask for a MARTA Act change? Am I correct, Mr. Hunt?
Depending on the intergovernmental agreement that you're referencing, the answer could be yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I knew it was a bigger deal. It's not that it can't be done, it's just that extra step that has to happen. Thank you.
I appreciate you so much, and thank you for your willingness to talk about this some more.
All right, Mr. Duratt.
Really quickly, I want to encourage MARTA and the city of Atlanta to set a really short schedule for resolving this audit question and where the dollars should be, operations or capital. And so, when I heard you say three months, I want to say no because the longer this is festering, the more difficult it is to have a really constructive relationship practically and also the perception of the public. So, I want to encourage us to nail it down in 30 days, if we can. If we put our minds to it, I would expect we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor and team, for coming out. I just wanted to say that the city representatives have talked with your team over the course of time, and so, we're not making much comment or feedback today because we wanted to make sure that other board members had time to speak up, ask questions, and give feedback.
No, I appreciate that. We talked enough. I get that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before I turn it over to Mr. Greenwood, and then I have some comments after Mr. Greenwood? But I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Chair. I thank you, Mayor Dickens, for coming down here and sharing your thoughts with us. Mr. Duratt, in terms of the audit, we're about to let the auditors speak in our very next session. So, I will say the comments about KPMG not conducting an audit but a review, KPMG will speak to that today, and they will tell you that any assessment of the methodology is not considered an audit. It is a review. So, whether it's M&amp;J or KPMG looking at that subject matter to be proper, they, the professionals, would not call that an audit. They would call that a review. So, that puts them on even keel, but I will let KPMG speak to that in a moment. I also wanted to...I wanted to mention that the methodology that Malden and Jenkins used, we didn't just recently identify that this is not appropriate. MARTA identified that the threshold method that Malden and Jenkins used was inappropriate at the time. We said it was inappropriate before the draft was printed, and we continue to say it's inappropriate. So, this is not news to MARTA that the 70 million is an incorrect number. I suppose it's news to others, but we are...we stand steadfast behind the fact that that threshold method was inappropriate to begin with, and it remains inappropriate, and that the, you know, proportionate method is the right one. But again, you'll hear that from the technical experts themselves. I wanted to ask Kerry Rocha about the concept...two things, really, Kerry. We've heard two things that kind of have me concerned. One is that MARTA has canceled seven meetings. This is the first I'm hearing that, so I'd like you to speak to that. I'm also curious about the idea that MARTA hasn't submitted all of our reviews at the same time. It was my understanding that, working under CMAR, you're not expected to submit all your reviews at the same time and that, you know, I guess a protracted, one-at-a-time representation is consistent with the way other entities do that. So, can you speak to those two issues?
Yeah, so, similar to some of the comments that were made, we did cancel the meetings. You know, MARTA owned the team's invite for those meetings. I do have in my hands a message that we had received from the city that quotes "City departments are still awaiting final direction and decision-making." This was sent on September 17 regarding the Five Points Project, "And will resume any permit issuance upon notification of those decisions, which may impact construction documents and the types of permits being issued." So, essentially, we received from the staff that said, "For now, we can't help you." And that was kind of the...each meeting was canceled. Each meeting had a notification that said, you know, "Until these are resolved." And these are the teams that are trying to coordinate this. And I understand, you know, bigger decisions we're looking to feed into moving forward. I will also note that, in the meantime, we were going through the SAP process for ASHBY. So, we were never told on ASHBY that we could apply for a waiver. We went through that. We actually paid $250. We were told we had to pay it in order to get the hearing scheduled. We still have not received that money back from the city. We are...we have requested that money back from the city. So, we'll continue to work through that. And then, on the CMAR side...
So, just to summarize, those seven canceled meetings were not canceled of MARTA's volition, but there was some notification from the city that they would not be engaging in those meetings?
That is correct.
Okay. And on to the CMAR issue?
On to the CMAR issue. So, CMAR is Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method. CMAR is actually no secret to the city because they do use this for the Hartsfield Airport frequently. CMAR is where you can get out and start working on a project without having all of the other pieces of the project completely set in stone, right? It allows us to get out there much earlier. And we knew on this project and have been working with the city, those packages, P1 through P5, had been laid out. All of the discussions had been that we were going to submit P1 and P2 together for permitting, and then we'll be...we will be submitting P5 for the billback. And so, again, we're working through the final design process. We waited a good amount of time for the city to get back to us with their 100% plans because of the pause again, not knowing what we were constructing. So, the plans were sent over, I think it was 8/31, and we did not receive their comments back on the 100% billback until November. So, you know, again, I think from a staff perspective, our team has tried to continue to push things along. I think the decisions were part of the challenges here.
Is it also true that one of your staff was so persistent in trying to reach the city that he...his number was blocked?
Yeah, he's been reaching out to the permitting staff even during that time, trying to find status. His number was blocked, and so, they've been pretty creative as to where they can call city staff from, so their numbers weren't recognized.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Thank you, Mayor Dickens and your team, so much for coming today. I do think this has been very educational for the Board and to better understand these issues that we've been reading in the paper, unfortunately, and to understand what the city's real vision is for transit in the city. And as Ms. Jones said, Mr. Zagabi and Ms. Jones and I have all had an opportunity to be thoroughly briefed on this and how it plays into the mayor's broader plan for making the city a better place to work, live, and raise a family. I am very, very excited about the overall plan. I made it through four years on City Council without getting any gray hair. And every day when I look in the mirror now, I'm like, damn, there's another one. So, I really hope that this meeting today is a step forward in us focusing all of our energy on our joint interest on building transit in the city and trying to put any past issues behind us. I don't want to be the chair of this organization and not get anything built. I will feel like an enormous failure if that happens. And we have, you know, and feel like we have let down the taxpayers of Atlanta. So, you know, we need to do wonderful things across the system, but the City of Atlanta does have a unique opportunity right now with the money that our taxpayers have said that they want to go to transit to, you know, make the city a better place to work, live, and raise a family. So, I hope we can focus on that. I will say, Ms. Perkins Hooker and Mr. Hunt are both very, very good lawyers. I hope that the two of you all can get together and come to an understanding of this zoning waiver issue, because it shouldn't be something that people have to sit in a meeting to learn. It should be in the city code, and we should be able to understand it. So, that is my assignment to you, Mr. Hunt, is to please to get together with the city attorney, and you all figure that out so that we're not left up for every project trying to come to a understanding of whether we need to go through the full permitting process and not. And I do hope that the teams continue to work in permitting on both sides goes much more smoothly than Five Points has so far. And I'm really looking forward to having the plan that you, Mayor Dickens and your team presented to us today. I know it needs to go through the Governance Committee and that it needs to come to MARTA, because there are some tweaks to what that Phase 1 list is. And time is money, and money in its delay. So, I know you all meet at least, I know you're talking about it every day. I know the Governance Committee, I think, meets monthly. So, I hope that that moves quickly and it comes to us in the right official formats that it does. If there are any questions about what that process is and what that format is, I hope people communicate quickly about that so that we don't delay. But I am very excited to see more transit and more options in Atlanta, and I look forward to working together with your team on that.
Thank you all. Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. CEO, to all of you Board members. Thank you all for indulging us. I know this has been a greater part of an hour, but I hope you find it time well spent. So, thank you all. Look forward to the next conversations. My number still works. My number isn't blocked by anybody, I hope, and I haven't blocked anybody's number. So, if you ever want to reach the Mayor of Atlanta, those of you that have the phone number, you got it, and use it. Use it often, like everybody else does that wants something. So, and yours isn't blocked? Your number work? Your number work? Your number work? Count on us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And turn it back over to Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On to the audit. I would invite KPMG to prepare to come up. But first, let me say a few words. As most of you will recall, City of Atlanta employed Malden and Jenkins in June of 2023 to conduct a review of the More Marta City of Atlanta program. After nearly a year, the Malden and Jenkins report was released with their findings. Now, MARTA supported the majority of their findings, but took strong opposition to one finding in particular owing to their financial methodology and the subsequent assumptions made by others that somehow MARTA ought to transfer $70 million from the general fund to the More Marta City of Atlanta account. MARTA had recommended the proportional methodology to M&amp;J, but they refused to investigate it further. MARTA continued to object to M&amp;J's use of the threshold methodology before, during, and for months after they had completed their work and released their findings. The flawed findings were amplified by many with little regard for our objections or the unfair taking of funds that belonged to Clayton County, DeKalb County, Fulton County, and City of Atlanta jointly. So, when MARTOC, our governing oversight body, became aware of our position concerning the M&amp;J report, we were directed to obtain the recognized expertise of KPMG. KPMG is one of the world's foremost global accounting advisory firms, and we asked them to conduct an in-depth review of the appropriate methodology and determine the correct amount of monies to be transferred, if any. That review began in December 2024 and concluded with KPMG's submission of their final report on Monday, March 10th, 2025. I can assure you that MARTA's role in this review has been limited to ensuring that KPMG had complete and unfettered access to all MARTA data and records and that all MARTA personnel were available to KPMG for interviews, workshops, questions, and answers. So, their review, while very technical, was accurate. They are here to explain it. And I will say that we concur with their findings, which support that the entire amount to have been transferred from MARTA's general fund to the More Marta City of Atlanta account was not $70 million, but instead, it was $865,000. And with that, I will defer to KPMG, Ms. Julie Beriantos, and Mr. Victoria Finley.
Madam Chair, Mr. Greenwood, and members of the MARTA Board, thank you so much for this opportunity for us to present our assessment report. First of all, I'm going to tell you that the best news I heard today is that you're not going to make, Victoria and I, duke it out with Malden and Jenkins. Thank you for that. My name is Julie Beriantos, and I am a Managing Director with KPMG. I've been with the firm almost 30 years. I spent 18 of those in KPMG's audit practice. I am a CPA, where I specialized in government audits. And then, I moved into our advisory practice to conduct assessments like this. This is my area that we excel in. We do, we conduct financial assessments for certain things in the back office operations for government organizations. I will let, I'm here with Victoria Finley. She's my colleague. She did a lot of the work as well on this assessment. And so, I will let her introduce herself when she comes up here to present the observations. But I did want to take a minute here to talk about KPMG and then also the focus of what we did for you today. KPMG, and it's been said already, that we are a Big Four firm. We are global, but we actually operate out of all 50 states in the United States. I think what is so unique about KPMG is we were one of the first firms to align ourselves by industry. So, we do have a specific government practice that both Victoria and I are a part of. Our government practice has been in existence for over 100 years. We have over 1,700 professionals in that practice. I have to look down at the number. But we do, we do a lot of audits in the government industry and a lot of assessments in the government industry. And we do focus specifically on the transit industry as well. We have done work for nine out of the 10 largest transit organizations in the United States. So, flipping to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what our project objective was. Our project objective wasn't to look at Malden and Jenkins' report, to be quite honest. Our project objective was to look at the two cost allocation methodologies that MARTA had put in front of us to determine which one most fairly and proportionally aligned costs between the operating and capital funds for the More Marta program. And the way we approached this is we met with MARTA's staff. We read the documentation around the cost allocation process, what was being used for the base, how were the costs allocated? We had several interviews and workshops to understand both processes, and we actually did go through and recalculate them. And so, using all of that, we formed our opinion as to whether, you know, which methodology aligned those costs best based on the underlying base. And so, and we were actually, we had, everybody gave us a lot of information. They were very forthcoming. We received everything we asked for. And MARTA was very supportive and helpful throughout this process. And I wanted to thank them as well for all of the hard work, because it is a little bit complicated to try to understand the processes. And so, it does take a lot of explaining before you can finally get down to, okay, well, that makes complete sense. So, with that, I am going to actually turn this over to Victoria, and she will kind of walk you through our observations and recommendations. And then, we'll take questions after that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Greenwood, members of the Board, thanks for having us here today so that we can review our report with you. My name is Victoria Finley, as has already been said. I have over 20 years of experience in financial management, planning, and analysis. I've been with KPMG for over eight years in our finance transformation government practice. And so, I have a lot of experience doing projects such as this one. Prior to KPMG, I was also a financial manager in a few different private sector companies. And I started my career in state government at the New York State Division of Budget. So, I'm also very familiar with the public sector operations as well. And so, just to give you a little bit of background, which you might already be aware of, but the More Marta program is funded with sales tax revenue, and MARTA is not currently tracking costs at the bus route level. And so, in order to determine, you know, how much cost to allocate against the sales tax revenue, there has to be a cost allocation method developed so that, you know, you can figure out how much of the bus operations should be attributed to the More Marta program and how much cost should be attributed to the programs outside of More Marta. And so, what MARTA has done is they had two different methodologies that were being used. One was looked at by Malden and Jenkins, the threshold method, one was not. And this is how MARTA is determining, again, how much cost to allocate. And these costs are split between operations and capital costs. And so, when we talk about, you know, what's owed to the City of Atlanta, it's really transfers between MARTA's operational fund and the capital fund. So, it's not really money going directly to the city, but it's money that would be paid for, you know, the operations and maintenance of the buses related to the More Marta program, and then the capital investments that the City of Atlanta has set forth in the intergovernmental agreement. And so, when we looked at the two different cost allocation methodologies, the threshold method basically takes 2016 as the basis. And so, all service increases or decreases above 2016, they were attributing to the More Marta program. And so, what they do is they look at, you know, the percentage of revenue hours and miles, and they took all of the revenue hours and miles above 2016 and said, okay, this is, you know, More Marta revenue hours and miles. And so, that, you know, probably did make sense in the early years, because when they, when you were all ramping up the More Marta program, most of the increases were the new, you know, or enhanced More Marta routes. And so, you know, if you look, we have a table in our report which kind of shows you the difference in the operating costs that were being allocated to the program. And for the first three years under both methods, the operational costs are the same. Where this ends up being a problem was when COVID hit and when, you know, there was social distancing and a lot of the routes were being canceled or pulled back, all of those decreases were also taken from the More Marta program. And the reason this is an issue is because, you know, this is how we're figuring out, you know, how much of operational cost should be charged to the program. And so, because there were so many decreases, it really shrunk what was being charged as operations against More Marta. And so, that was showing, like that $70 million that Malden and Jenkins came up with, that's showing that that should be transferred to the Capital Reserve. But that's really, you know, probably not what was, basically, not as much operational cost was being charged as More Marta was probably generating. And so, just moving on to the proportional method, the difference there is what MARTA did was they looked at all of the More Marta routes from 2017 to 2019 and figured out, you know, what are the increases in routes? What are those percentages? And then, they, you know, switched the baseline from 2017 to 2019, because that's when the More Marta routes had really stabilized. All the increases that were going to occur really, you know, had occurred and were factored into that baseline. And they took the percentages of what the More Marta routes had shown for increases. And that's how, you know, the proportional method now figures out, you know, what operational costs to reflect against the program. And the other thing that the proportional method does is it allocates the costs of, like any increases or decreases, it allocates it across the system. So, it's not taking, you know, all increases above 2017, you know, attributing them to More Marta and decreases against More Marta. It's taking all the increases and decreases and spreading them across More Marta and not Non-More Marta routes. And so, when we looked at this, we really, you know, think this does make a lot more sense, because it's really a transit organization. You can't, you know, necessarily say this route only goes in the City of Atlanta. They're really inside and outside the City of Atlanta. And so, you know, it really makes a difference, you know, when you look at the different cost methodologies. Depending on which methodology you use, you get a different answer. And so, when we looked at the threshold method, it said that $82 million would be owed to the City of Atlanta's Capital Reserve. But when you look at the threshold method, which is actually spreading the cost of operations across the system and not just charging it to More Marta, the City of Atlanta only should get $865,000 to the Capital Reserve. And so, it really, you know, our conclusion was that the threshold method really was not fair and equitable. You know, in the beginning, you know, all the costs were getting charged to More Marta. But like I said, when there was a decline that was happening across the system, More Marta was really getting the benefit of all those declines when it could have been happening, you know, in an outside county. Everybody was experiencing declines. And so, it should have been spread across the system and not just counted to the threshold method or the More Marta program. So, that's our first recommendation is just, you know, based on those two different methodologies, we're really recommending, as has been said here today, that, you know, MARTA, you know, needs to decide which methodology that is most fair and equitable. And I think that they, you know, have said the proportional method makes more sense, you know, to make sure that we're looking at this as a transit system and we're not just, you know, we're spreading the cost of operations, whether it's increases and decreases across the system and not just looking at More Marta specifically. Another thing that has been said here today is that we found that the intergovernmental agreement should be updated. Right now, it's very high level, and it does have, like, the list of capital projects, but it doesn't necessarily create, like, a working relationship between the city and MARTA. And so, the things that we found was, there should be, you know, an agreement on how costs are being, well, how operation and capital costs are being paid for. Right now, it's a 50-50 split, but just, you know, talking amongst MARTA and the city for how those things should be split. Also, there were some service changes that happened along the way. And it was more of like an informal process of when, you know, More Marta routes should be increased or decreased. And we think that that should be a more formalized process, and there should be documentation so that anytime there's a change, you know, it's logged and, you know, the date and who approved the change and what is the change, just so, you know, if there's any, you know, future discrepancies, there's documentation about why certain service changes have happened. And then, the last thing was just, you know, establishing a reporting cadence between MARTA and the City of Atlanta, just deciding, you know, what kind of performance information would MARTA, or would the City of Atlanta like to see from MARTA? And just coming to an agreement on how MARTA can, you know, report to the city on the More Marta program performance so that everybody kind of knows, you know, what's going on and, you know, what progress is being made against the program and what the funding's being used for. These next observations and recommendations, I'm going to go a little quicker through, because they're more process improvement for MARTA. But we recommended that their cost allocation process just be in one single Excel sheet. Right now, there's different departments involved, and they all kind of have their own calculations that feed into the process. So, just for audit purposes, you know, we recommend that they have it in one workbook or utilize a system. The next recommendation is to develop policies and procedures. So, once a cost allocation methodology is decided upon, MARTA should document the whole process, just so the steps, you know, are in a policy and procedure. Who's conducting the steps is there? Just, this is for training purposes, but also for audit purposes and internal controls to have the process documented so that everybody understands what's going into the process. The next recommendation is to validate the cost allocation assumptions. There are some assumptions that are made in this cost allocation calculation, such as planned hours and miles are used, and there's some capital averages being used. And so, we're just recommending to compare those to actuals from time to time to make sure that there's not a big discrepancy between assumptions of that there's not a big discrepancy between assumptions of planned information versus actuals. And the last one is the city does have advanced technology for route-specific information, but right now, it's not really used to track actuals at the bus route level. And so this is probably more of a long-term project, but, you know, it could be helpful in the future to know, you know, what routes are actually, you know, revenue generating different hours and miles using the advanced technology. So those are our recommendations. Is there any questions that anyone wants to go through at this point?
I think we have several questions. Before we jump into the questions, and I don't know if this is a question for you all or somebody from Marta, can we go back in time a little bit to when the first, when Moore-Marta was created and the decision was made to do enhanced bus service? And what, who made that request? How is that documented? Just sort of what do we have of what the expectation was? Mr. Hurley.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that decision was made in the legislation that was voted on by the residents of the city of Atlanta. There's an enhanced bus service in the project list.
And how defined was that and sort of who put the definition around it?
Yes, ma'am. It was not defined in detail, to my knowledge. There was a working group between Marta personnel and city personnel that rolled that service out over multiple years from 2017 through 2019.
Okay, but there's not, you know, there wasn't any master list made of this is what more enhanced bus service under Moore-Marta?
Not prior to, of course, they came out with lists that we're going to enhance this particular service for this markup period, and that was reviewed by the groups and it was rolled out, and then they did the same at subsequent markup periods. But there was nothing set aside that I'm aware of that defined which routes and things like that ahead of time, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That, I think that's just helpful to me to understand that enhanced bus service is sort of a vague term that we're dealing with. All right, thank you. Mr. Worthy, you're up first.
Yes, a question. I, when the city requested their audit, I was board chairman of this board, and then you very quickly go from chairman to being a backbench or nobody that doesn't get all the information. So I remember the city requesting their audit, but I want to make it crystal clear to the board, and maybe this is a colleague question, but this audit was requested by the MARTOC Committee of the General Assembly, correct?
The KPMG audit, yes, by the MARTOC Committee.
So, I don't like the narrative of Marta's audit versus the city's audit. This is a narrative of our legal oversight body commissioned y'all to do this, and the other audit was commissioned by the city. So I want that to be very crystal clear that this isn't Marta versus the city, this is our legal oversight body commissioning this audit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Question for the two of you that I think was more appropriately directed to the two of you. Obviously, the proportional method versus the threshold method, that delta is about $81 million. That's a big, big delta. How can it be, you described it, but how can this be so different? And how can, one, how can the city believe that the threshold method is fair and we believe that this is fair? How can this be so different? And is this really just COVID?
Well, I don't know how they, I don't, I can't get into people's minds as to how, why they think it's so fair. But what I can say is that if you use the threshold method and you look at the years in COVID, that at some point, the service levels are negative. And it really doesn't make sense that service could ever be negative for a program. And so to me, that was kind of the thing when I was looking between the two methods to say, that kind of put a little bit of alarm bells in my head as to why that method was being used when the service levels were negative for the Moore-Marta enhanced bus service. So that, it just, it conceptually didn't make sense to me, and that's why we went back to look at what the proportional method did. And that made more sense to me because the service declines weren't, were part of a system-wide decline. It wasn't a decline in the Moore-Marta program only, it was experienced system-wide. And that's why we landed on the proportional method as being more reasonable from a cost allocation methodology standpoint.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers.
First, I want to make sure you reference the technology that's available now about the route tracking, but I want to be clear that I understand the picture in 2020. I think at the beginning of your, and let me back up, thank you. But at the beginning of your presentation, I think you said we, at that time, Marta was not tracking to the route level. So for instance, if the 193 in Clayton was canceled as part of a greater system-wide, that wasn't being tracked as it relates to what money we're putting in and what money we're taking away. Is that correct?
Right.
Certainly, that also applies that we're all interconnected. That would also apply that if a Clayton bus route traveled to the city of Atlanta and that was canceled, that wasn't being tracked either.
Right.
And not, and I agree that the feature of technology, you know, it's rapidly evolving. So five years later, maybe we have a better way of doing it. My questions aren't, you know, disparaging anything, I just want to make sure I understand that. From a standpoint, everyone though was paying, and by everyone, it won't surprise you to know that I don't represent one of the city jurisdictions, I represent one of the county jurisdictions, but, you know, we've got a fiduciary duty to everybody with this public money. So was every, so my understanding is everyone's paying in, and with the threshold method, with, and everyone's affected by cancellation of services, but with the threshold method, only the city of Atlanta would get the refund for that?
Right, true.
Okay. And with the proportional method, every jurisdiction's paying in, every jurisdiction ended up with some reduction, and every jurisdiction proportionally would be given a refund of their taxpayer dollars to the operations.
Right.
Okay. Now, the final thing I have a question about, and I'm not asking you to pine on Malden and Jenkins, but one of their concerns was there was this information gap, I believe, that they talked about prior employees or anything like that. Did y'all encounter any information gap, or were you able to get everything you need to make your recommendation about the reasonableness of which method?
We were able to get everything that we needed. We could not get back to the numbers that Malden and Jenkins did, and I think that was part of the reason that maybe some of that documentation wasn't available back when they did their report.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Mr. Pond.
Mr. Worthy asked my first question, but my second question, I want to hopefully maybe simplify why we, why we ended up with all of this. I read in the paper that Marta overcharged the one fund and the short change to the Capital Fund appeared to me kind of an egregious statement. What we're talking about is budgeted money. A lot of that money hasn't been spent yet. So that half a penny, that Moore-Marta money is in a pot of money, and that's isolated and that's not being spent in any other budget, right?
I mean, Kevin can probably better explain.
This money we're talking about is totally isolated into half a penny.
The funding comes in for the, for Marta, and part of that is the city of Atlanta half penny. And the way we handle that is we take .25 of a penny and put it into their construction reserve, and then we budget for their enhanced bus service by putting .25 into our operating budget. What the funding variance is recognizing is that we had budgeted service that we did not actually execute, and therefore we should reimburse the city's capital fund where we put the initial 25, .25 with this additional 865,000 because we didn't run the service. It's fair.
But what we're basically talking about is the reallocation adjustment is just to move money from one budget to the other budget.
Yes, sir. It's moving money from our general fund to the Marta, Moore-Marta Capital Reserve. All the monies reside within Marta.
And that's to true it up for that 50-50 split of that.
It's to true it up for actual performance versus what we budgeted for at that time.
Right. So there's no money taken away from the half a penny?
No, sir. Money's all here, it's just which bucket is it sitting in?
And I think that's what I wanted to confirm and clarify, so.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Scott.
Actually, I think the, my fellow board members have somewhat asked my question, but technically, the actual Moore-Marta language that was on the ballot that the citizens voted for to increase the tax dollars, did the assessment determine that the funds were there based upon the language that the citizens voted for?
We did not go to the legislation, that was not part of our scope of work.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Segabe.
All right. First off, thank you for coming. This is really helpful. I spent some time with the report and it's really well laid out. First off, I just want to say like, we got to put this behind us, we got to figure this out, we got to move forward, we got to build stuff, and let's do it. Two, I reiterate everything said. If there's one takeaway, it's no money is lost, it's in different accounts, it's just an accounting exercise, we're going through an accounting exercise. And then secondly, it is a question of methodology, right? We're not arguing, you know, moving funds, doing this, it's a methodology question. And by the way, it's not surprising we're having this argument for two reasons. One, we never aligned on a methodology upfront. This was passed in 2017, we started a new service, nobody sat down and said, hey, how do you charge for service? So actually, it's not that surprising. It's surprising we're having it at the level we are, but it's not surprising. Then two, even if we had had a methodology, we probably would have used a threshold methodology because it made a ton of sense, and nobody had any idea that a global pandemic was going to come and totally ruin a methodology that makes sense. So I just say all that to say like, you know, as we think about a temperature down, it's actually not that surprising that we're having this discussion, it's just surprising, you know, a little bit of the temperature around it. But I have a series of questions just around methodology so I can better understand. So just a first question, these methodologies, where did they come from, the two that are listed here, and who created them? Because I've never seen them before, just curious.
Marta, Marta actually came up with them.
Oh, so these are Marta methodology, not KPMG, but Marta's?
No.
Okay. And when were they created?
They were created, they were started in 20, late 2022, early 2023, we were working on the threshold methodology. And as we built out the reconciliation for the years FY17 through 19, and stepped into the COVID years, we started to question why we were seeing all of the service being credited back to the city, all lost service. And so at that point, we started going, well, we're not proportionally allocating any service reductions to the city. So we started working on the proportional method. And at about that time, the Malden and Jenkins audit kicked off. So, you know, Malden and Jenkins was looking at the threshold method while we were building the proportional method. And they were made aware of the fact that we didn't think the threshold method was the most accurate way to do the allocation, but they, they had already latched on to the threshold method and didn't really dig into the proportional method. And once we built it out, they just had no interest, they were under the gun to get their report done, they really didn't want to extend the time to dig into the proportional method. And if you read their report, read it specifically, they don't tell you that the threshold method is the way to go. They reference that it's a method.
Yep.
They also reference that we should agree upon one. So, you know, my personal opinion is that, hey, people see a big number and that's inciting and they, they use that. Where we should have had these discussions and can still have those discussions on what the best way is. We believe it's the proportional method because we're fiscally responsible for all of our jurisdictions. And we don't want one jurisdiction to inordinately get something that our other jurisdictions are not beneficial for.
Absolutely.
And so that's the approach that we took when we built out the proportional method.
Absolutely. So before COVID, how were we calculating the cost of the service?
We were utilizing the threshold method because service was additive.
Okay.
You didn't see the impact of the declines because all we were doing every year was adding service. So you never really saw what negative did.
That totally makes sense. I guess my question would be, how do we calculate actuals? Because when I look at prior reporting that we put out as an agency, I'll take an example, 2017, we have stated that the actual cost, not the budgeted cost of service, was $17 million. So what methodology led us to like $17 million in 2017 if we were using the threshold method?
The threshold method, what we do is we developed ratios in order to apply that to our actual service statistics that we report to NTD. So it'll tell us X percent of Marta's total service belongs to the city of Atlanta.
Okay.
And we apply that to our actual cost that we report to the NTD.
Okay. So I guess the question, because I look at this before COVID, and the numbers for this work and the M&amp;J work, they look very similar on an actuals basis.
Yes.
The biggest difference in those years is the Malden and Jenkins work is referenced against actuals that Marta has reported, not against budgeted values, and that's why the numbers are so large. So like 2017, this report says the true-up is $2 million. However, when you look at the Malden and Jenkins work, they say it's more than $10 million because they're comparing to actuals that we've reported prior. So I'm just trying to understand, those actuals that we've reported, why are those?
The actuals don't have it, the actuals are the same. What Malden and Jenkins, you know, finance, we levy, we do the math on the service statistics. So we were provided service statistics, and this is where the information gap comes into play a little bit. The service statistics that we were provided to do the initial threshold comparison with did not have down to the individual detail on the service statistics. We had emails that we were supplied information, but we didn't have the underlying spreadsheets that showed that calculation. We ultimately went back and hired the people that did those, that work at Marta when we first reported on it, and had them come back to recreate it so we could provide the detail to KPMG that we could not provide to Malden and Jenkins. There were differences in that number, they couldn't exactly duplicate it, so the ratio is different, the actuals are not different.
Okay. Well, I think, and maybe we can take this offline, but like I'm looking at a document that was submitted to the city, it's called Moore-Marta Monthly Report, March 2022. It shows an actuals line for bus service, and that line says 17 million in 2027, it doesn't show 5 million. So it wasn't the threshold method that calculated it. It says 45 million in 2018, it doesn't show 22 million. So it's massively more, which, again, these two, like they say the same thing in the first four years, but they're comparing to a different baseline. One is the budget, and one is the actuals that we've reported as an agency, and I'm just trying to understand how we calculate those actuals, and if they're wrong, why we put them into public documents? And maybe for the KPMG team, were those actuals shared with you? Did y'all review those in your work?
We used actuals.
You use actuals that have been reported?
We used actuals that...
To NTD.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm looking at actuals that have been reported and like...
I don't, I'm not, I'd have to see the report that you're referencing, but certainly we can talk about that.
So I'll share that. I just, my big takeaway is before COVID, we actually say the same thing, both of these pieces of work. The difference is there's a set of actuals, and the actuals are what the city of Atlanta has been working off of, which is what the audit has said and everything, but those aren't reflected here, so we've totally thrown out those actuals and just would love to understand how we did. The second question I have is just around, when I look at this table that says that there's a true-up of a million dollars, is, are CMAC funds included in this?
Yes, they are.
So we've deducted in 2019 and 2020, 8.4, but 16.8 million in CMAC. So we've deducted in 2019 and 2020, 16, or 8.4, but 16.8 million in CMAC funds from these totals?
Yes, sir. When we reconciled the amount on the income side as well as the expenditure side, we would credit the more Marda City of Atlanta funding by the amount of the CMAC in the calculation.
Okay. Because all of these numbers more or less match, like the threshold method in 2019. It's very similar to what Maldens and Jenkins did. The numbers look very similar. The only difference is there's 8.4 million in CMAC funds that come out. And it's very hard in this, and maybe we can look at the breakout. But, you know, calculating that 44 million and how we took out 8.4 million in 2019 and then took out 8.4 million in 2020. Because the numbers are very close. It's surprising that one has a minimum and one doesn't, but it could be chance.
I could certainly show you, I, I think maybe in a breakout session where there's a, there's another calculation. We say, okay, now let's true up against what the, the account has in that year. And that's the point at which you make the adjustment for the CMAC.
Okay. I would love to see it. The next piece is just around, this piece on not being able to use miles and that we have to do an allocation. I, I have a report here that we've published prior that is a bus service booklet where we've actually compared the number of vehicle mile, miles hour, vehicle hours as well as miles on every single route in More Marda compared to the baseline in prior period. So is that data not accurate, or is there a reason we didn't actually use VMH per route, given we published a book on this prior?
All right. So make sure I understand the, the nature of the question. So you're asking compared to vehicle miles traveled on this individual route versus the reconciliation we did?
Yes, because we're saying we need to use the proportional method because we cannot track by route. But we've published a book that says every single route, what was the baseline and where were we at in '23? So somehow we were able to come up with the data and say, this specific route went up by this many vehicle mile hours compared to the baseline. This one went down. So why couldn't we use that in coming up with, with the analysis?
I'm, I'm probably speaking somewhat inexpertly, so I'll have to comment with a grain of salt on this. But what, from my understanding of how we are typically calculating the routes, we, we, so there's a planned set of routes. The planned miles and hours can go up or go down. The actuals that happen along the route, we typically see how many runs of the bus occurred on that route. And then we can, and, and do deduct missed trips from that to try to, to try to hone in on an actual. But there are discrepancies that can happen along the way that that data is not pristine from purpose of being able to look by route on an actual level. And typically, historically, when we're looking at what we report to the National Transit Database, we take a look at total miles and hours run, which is something we can calculate. But it's not typically broken down in what we deemed as be a reliable fashion to be able to say, this is exactly how many miles and hours were run on each route during that time.
Okay. So the, so the report that we put out is only on planned. It's not actuals?
I'd have to confirm that. I, I can't say that definitively.
Okay.
Well, the one thing- That, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe the one thing I would say there is throughout this report, there are a number of areas that it shows that the planned number of hours have gone down across More Mar- like, the whole point of enhanced bus service was to put more buses on the road, and the city would pay for them. It was, hey, put another bus on, we'll pay the cost. Put another bus on, we'll pay the cost. We're in a place today where $40 million is being spent. And I think if you go to these routes, you're not going to find that there's more service prior than there was prior. So I, I, I just think it's very important to say, hey, let's not just look at this whole system and spread it like peanut butter. If we have the data to say, we have reduced the planned number of hours on routes that were part of More Marda below the baseline, I don't think we should be paying for enhanced service if we have, at least on the planned level. Like, that's something to, to check it against, and I, I'm just surprised it's not something we've looked at. The only other thing I'd say is, I, I, you know, I'd love for us to be able to get to the, to the actual using the miles. I mean, we have a lot of CATAVL data. I'm, I'm surprised that we can't. But in any world, if we're going to use the proportional method, that makes sense. So you're going to say, or here's how I understand it, and maybe I'm wrong. We look at 2016 and we say, how much of the service was More Marda? Because we had a way to calculate it, and it was 9.7%. And this method says that every year since 2019 and every year going forward, 9.7% of all the bus service that we put in the city, no matter where it is, the City of Atlanta is responsible for as enhanced bus service. That's the proportional method, and if the overall amount everywhere in the system goes down, then the city is going to pay proportional of that. Even if we canceled half the routes in the city, you're still responsible for 9. I know we didn't, but you're still responsible for 9.7%. So we say 9.7% of the cost, 9%, 0.7% of Marda Mobility, 9.7% of sustained capital as we roll it in and do that allocation. So we are looking at all the costs, and I don't know, to me, it seems like the most punitive way to look at it because 9.7 of all the costs that we put on the road, we're, we're responsible for. But what about 9.7% of the revenue? Because every time we roll a bus in the general fund, it's offset by revenue. 9.7% of the formula funds, given we're paying the cost of it. Is there a reason that's not brought into the formula, given those offset the general fund and would be offsetting what we are now proportionally responsible for?
I, I think part of our recommendations is not to stick with these assumptions forever. And I think what we said was, they do need to be validated because there are facts and circumstances that could change throughout the operations or what More, what Marda is doing that could very well impact that cost allocation and may get disproportionate. So I agree. I think that in, you know, those assumptions that we've made today need to be validated occasionally to make sure that it, it still represents the nature of the operations of Marda.
So then, would you say that it's fair for 9.7% of the fare box revenue and the formula funds to also maybe be deducted off of 9.7% of the cost? Is that a fair change to the methodology?
Well, I don't-
No, I, I would not. I would not agree with that. I, I would say, so the first part of your comment, yes, we are in a position now that moving forward, we have more technology that we'll be able to assess by, you know, a route-by-route basis so that, you know, it becomes an academic discussion in terms of the past, except to say that we are a system. And so when we are running the system, the revenues, the costs, the, the unexpected expenses, sustaining capital, that is calculated on a system basis. And it's, it's almost like, you know, the sum of the parts is greater than the whole, or the whole's greater than the sum of the parts. We, it would be a Herculean effort to begin with to start disassembling that on a disaggregate level for each of our counties. But also, I think there's a, a whole lot of other considerations that would have to come into play. And what, what we're trying to establish today is what is the most appropriate method to assess the monies that have been transferred to date? We can, we can have a conversation moving forward about, you know, what technology allows us to do in the future. But at this point in time, I would say no. I mean, Marda has always acted as a system, and it's not in anyone's best interest to disaggregate it today for the purposes of this conversation.
Thank you very much. And I would agree. We don't want to disaggregate, disaggregate everything. But if we're going to take an expansion account and roll it into the general fund, which is effectively what we've done. We said 9.7% of all service the city's going to pay for going forward. I think you've got to think of it holistically and say, it's not just the cost. It's also the offsets, things like CAREZAC that every year during COVID, we ran a massive surplus that offset all of the general fund, offset all the rest of the operations, but had no impact on More Marda. We paid the same bill, but everything else was offset. So I, look, I, I think this is a, like a great analysis. I think it's very clear here how things are laid out. I would just say, there are a few questions I have on method. There are a number of things that we put out publicly prior that don't align with these numbers. And lastly, like, if, if we're going to go towards the, the city is responsible for 9.7% in perpetuity based on how we're, we're calculating it, then I would just think of that holistically because you're putting all the costs. It's like you own 9%, 9.7% of this building, you owe 9.7% of rent or of, of, of mortgage and all the costs. But when you collect rent, you get nothing because we're going to put all the costs and none of the offset. So those would just be my comments on this. I, I think, like, if I was to maybe summarize, I think what Maldens and Jenkins did is the ceiling. It is the most aggressive way you could think about this. I think the number is quite high. I think, in my opinion, this is the most punitive way to think about it. I, I agree with proportionality. I just think the way it's been calculated is very punitive. And then lastly, like, we've got to reconcile this with actuals and other numbers that we've put out publicly because these numbers don't align with things that we've said publicly prior.
Yeah, and I will, I will follow on with the idea that this proportional method was being established at the time that the Malden and Jenkins audit was being done. So it's not that Marda had proportional numbers prior and just didn't, didn't use them. This is a, this is an improvement on the, the level of information that we had.
All right. Are there any other questions from board members? I want to thank Mr. Zagabe for his very detailed analysis of this. We, Ms. Jones and I were happy for him to be the Atlanta rep to dive into this. And I, I appreciate the work done by KPMG and by Marda. I, you know, sitting here today, don't feel like this is done. I, I would like for it to be done soon, but I think that, you know, there are, there are questions raised in the KPM, questions and recommendations made in here, and I do think there needs to be some more validation. I'm just going to be blunt and say this. I was disappointed that Marda made a statement to the news this week that, you know, there was a, you know, period made at the end of this because I wanted to have this board discussion today. I wanted to understand these two reports better. And, you know, the mayor obviously wants to come to a resolution quickly. I want to come to a resolution quickly. But it's a huge amount of City of Atlanta taxpayer money that we're talking about, and I think we haven't quite gotten the fine point on it yet. So I hope everybody can take some emotion out of this and we can start dealing with math moving forward. Because I just don't think it's productive to be, you know, shouting at each other in the news about it. So thank you today, and maybe particularly for the City of Atlanta reps. Anybody who's interested, but I think we're the most interested. We can get some more of these data points and questions answered, and we can move forward to putting this behind us with the City of Atlanta. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Chair Aden, and thank you to KPMG for your time and expertise here today.
Madam Chair and Mr. Greenwood and members of the board, thank you so much for your time.
And Chair, just before I turn it over to you, just, you know, to make the point, when I spoke at MARTOC, I was clear that, yes, we have a fiduciary responsibility to all of the counties that pay in. But I did say, we're, we're expecting to have this conversation. There was no fine point put on the end of that sentence. We're going to be having a conversation with our board to, to discuss this matter further.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. That's not the way it played out in the AJC, but you never know how things are going to play out in the paper. All right. Do you have anything else on your report?
Well, yeah.
All right. Then let's move on to you, the end of your report.
Yep. I'm just going to go with some upcoming events. Y'all know about the committee meetings and the board meetings, but I will mention Writers Advisory Council on April 2nd, the MAC meeting on May 13th, and some upcoming APTA Transportation Association meetings as listed in your packet.
Is that it?
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Mr. Hunt, do we have anything to go into executive session about?
Yes, I would, would love a motion to go into executive session regarding litigation. Chair.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hardage. It looked like second by Mr. Pond. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. That is unanimous. We're going to go into executive session.
...
Got all that talk about the numbers all spread away?
Pick the wrong facet.
And I got into reading and I'm like, oh, zero number.
All right, Rob.
You know how to tell it though.
I got some fun sauce today.
Oh, see, there you go. Yeah, I chickened out today. I just went north.
That went normal.
Yeah, I chickened out. Typically, I don't. Well.
It says at the bottom it says the OG. The OG's five minutes.
Well, I tend to think like if you go black with a like black shoes, a servant suit, then you have to be a servant. That's kind of a business level, right? You just have to be. But once you, I mean, there's that other side, you gotta start mixing kind of current, modern, a little bit. Like the brown shoes, then I think you can have a fun.
The brown bill.
Right, yes. You can have a fun with it then, right?
Lighter, lighter, lighter color.
Exactly.
Close enough, right?
Good job. Yeah, I like the shirt. Thick, platter.
Exactly.
Yeah, I like that. I know, yeah. White shirts is still fun. Not a big white shirt guy. Every down the end.
Wait, we should say, we're not taking that off.
Hate, right? Cut his butt.
Yeah, yeah, boss.
That's your way on that, right?
He's out busy. He's like, that's all he's, yeah, every day. He knows he's gonna wear it, really work every single day. Like, let's get it after someplace like that. Nah, he can still. He probably would, yeah. Prayer. It's the two. It is, it is. I have to. If you help to compensate. You would shut me. Do you know, is that a? I think that's such a word about, there are some. Alliance is, you know, in that last part of that meeting, right? You can kind of feel it. Everyone, you kind of rely on the saying, this is where I'm at. You know, if you're old or if this is. Right, this is the word.
No, no, no.
It seemed like that's a, basically, you thought it disappeared. Right. I mean, the green car, some guy issued it.
No, I just, yeah. I, I forget.
But I mean, because everybody said they're all really safe. Oh, here's a street car here. Get it out. Actually, okay. That's right, just so they got out of the transit. Transit is, they do a lot of that. I'll just come up with a paper.
Test, test, okay.
Interesting.
This is the product collection. I'm chasing down some money, you know, and it was just a lot of you sharing responsibility. So, since it was land in London, well, he said he'd do a spin around for a break until all of them were. And I believe it's about, oh.
What else?
All right. These are, these are things looking at, yeah. About to go back. These are, it's just, I mean, that means it's on stage. Right, that's, yeah. It's like these charts, those charts. This is our power. They got nothing to do with it. We just got out of the office. Is that your problem? Make our problem yours. Make our problem yours.
All right, if everybody can take a seat, we're gonna. Try to get going. All right, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna call to order the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Directors meeting that was supposed, scheduled to start at one thirty, it's now two fifty-six, so apologies to people who have been waiting for this meeting to start. We had a very robust work session today, but a lot of important information. We are going to, Mr. Hunt, we're gonna begin with public comment. Do we have any public comment to report via email or voicemail?
Thank you, Chair. We had, we have one email via MARTA's public website, which will be sent to all the board members. We had no voicemails, and I believe we have six in-person public comments.
Yes, thank you. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes. If the forty-five minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed, public comment will be suspended, and the board meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the board meeting. I do have the green public comment sheets, we have six. So I'm gonna call you up in the order that they were received by name, and the time limit is two minutes, because we are running a full hour and a half behind, and I don't want to lose quorum here, and people do have some other business matters, I do need to stick strictly to that two-minute limit today, but there are other ways to reach out to the board and the GM if you don't get to deliver your full thoughts today. So first up, I have Matthew Rao.
Thank you, Chairperson Ide, thank you, members of the board. I had asked in my notes for another speaker, Beverly Miller, to cede her time to me. If that is possible, I will go over two minutes, if it's not.
That is not allowed under our rules, I apologize.
All right, I'll begin. Today you heard from Mayor Dickens, and I represent Beltline Rail now as its chair. Today you heard from the mayor and Mr. Courtney English about priorities for building rail on the Beltline nearly a year after pausing this project and final design with a thirteen million-dollar contract approved unanimously by this board. We heard a brilliant presentation by Mr. English, characterizing one of the principal pillars upon which Beltline Rail is the cornerstone of the entire Beltline project is based, and that is equity. But that presentation and all its luster leaves much to the imagination and ignores certain realities. Mr. English drew a line from northwest to southeast and suggested that statistics show that the income divide is along that line. He is right to do so, and he is correct. The entire Beltline project and its transit component are based on equity. And while the equinox, the income inequality represented by that line is there, so is the prosperity and opportunity divide. That opportunity exists on one side of that line and does not exist on the other today, and delaying a connection to the east-side trail with the thought of one day connecting it to the southwest side will not move the equity needle, not in the short term, not in the long term. Beastree Center MARTA Station that exists today can get you to the Beltline and Pond City Market in fifteen to twenty minutes if we adopt reasonable fixes to the streetcar. The fact is that you stand ready to deliver a project in revenue service in three years that crosses that equity divide. That's a fact. You will be blamed for its failure, not the mayor. He will be long gone after these projects are completed. What are you going to do now? We urge you to move forward with Streetcar East in its present form and get to the other projects Mr. English outlined as they are ready and when they can be paid for. That's the responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rao. Next up, we have Mr. Nagy.
Thank you for sticking with us after that long meeting, and welcome Shayna to the MARTA board. My name's Doug Nagy, an Atlanta resident who loves MARTA, rides MARTA, and who loves MARTA history. I believe we can reignite the magic of the early days of MARTA with Alan Kuiper and Bill Ide when this agency inspired Atlanta. But today I'm here because my family was the victim of violence on a MARTA train. A man pulled a gun on me and my mother-in-law, visiting the US for the first time from Colombia. Many victims simply stopped riding, but I believe capable people should lean in and solve problems. I pulled the crime data MARTA reports to the FBI going back to nineteen eighty-six. For most of its history, MARTA was incredibly safe. Between twenty twelve and twenty fifteen, there were no homicides over one thousand four hundred days. But in the past two years, someone has been murdered on MARTA every ninety days on average, more than any period in MARTA's history. This year began with the murder of a MARTA operator. It's no mystery why homicide is up. MARTA PD is down a hundred and fifty officers since two thousand nineteen. Yet during the deadliest period in MARTA history, MARTA cut MARTA police funding and officer positions by double digits in the twenty twenty-five budget. MARTA has cut officer positions in almost every year since twenty nineteen. As we enter a new budget season, we, you have a choice. This board has never been presented with a plan to restore MARTA PD to full officer strength from twenty nineteen, so I've written one, a plan that lays out how to fully staff MARTA PD before the World Cup. Riders like my mother-in-law deserve a safe and lovable MARTA. I encourage you to hire more police officers, and thank you again for your endurance and service to the community today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagy. Next up, Ms. Arnold. Is there a Ms. Arnold? Okay. Mr. Kimbrough.
All right, good afternoon, members of the board. Mr. Greenwood, my name is Quaint Kimbrough. I stand before you to address the ongoing need for this board to allow my fellow non-represented coworkers the opportunity to join the TWU of America. Since last addressing you, there have been many changes in the federal administration that could negatively impact MARTA and most other transit systems in the United States. However, the TWU is well-positioned to help MARTA in Washington, DC. This is not merely about representation, it's about securing the resources, advocacy, and influence that will help MARTA navigate the uncertain road ahead. Under the leadership of TW International President John Samuelson, the union has cultivated a strong and effective relationship with Federal Transit Administrator Marcus Molinaro. This partnership is not theoretical, it has yielded real results. The TWU was among the few labor organizations that backed Molinaro during his congressional run, and that strategic alliance has directly contributed to sound transportation policy and crucial funding initiatives, funding from which MARTA has already benefited. So having TWU on property at MARTA gives us all a strategic advantage, a stronger voice and additional allies in Washington as we continue to head into uncharted territory, given the growing concerns and discussions surrounding the future of federal funding for transit properties. We have a unique opportunity here, let's take advantage of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mister, I believe it's Paranac. Apologies if I don't get that right.
Okay, I'll be brief, we don't have much time, and as you mentioned too, some, some people's time is very important. I spent a lot of time to get here. I wanna quote you from the truth, or faithful are the wounds of a friend, deceitful are the kisses of the enemy. I am not your enemy. But I'll be blunt with you, it would be nice if your monitors and this thing was removed from our line of eye-to-eye sight. I made a great deal of time to come down here, I'd like for your attention to be given to me. It'd be nice if the full forty-five minutes would be granted to the other people more knowledgeable about these things. I'm not here to talk to you about the political implications, the social, fiscal, or environmental, thank you, implications of transit. Those are real, and I'm not here to talk to you about all of those things. I'm here to just speak about the fluidity, the mobility of the city. As a licensed professional civil engineer, I'm here to present to you this fact, in my professional opinion, the city of Atlanta is in a mode of failure. The city of Atlanta is in a mode of failure. The metropolitan area is in a mode of failure. The hundreds of thousands of people times hours spent on our freeways is immoral, is dysfunctional, is broken, and this metropolitan area will never arise to the accompaniment of true global cities until this is fixed. The only real solution is rail, a dedicated rapid rail transit system. That's the only real solution. Let's see. As a civil engineer, we have, like doctors have, the Hippocratic oath. Many civil engineers have been engaged in the maintenance and development of a transportation system in the metropolitan area, and each and every one of them are held to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Now ask yourself, has anybody gotten hurt on these highway systems that could have been mitigated by rail? Has the welfare of people's times and the businesses and the missed business, missed business meetings and late for jobs, delays, has that impacted people's welfare? Has safety been impacted?
Thank you. All right, and then I believe our last speaker, Mr. Coulter. Is there an Ivan? Thank you.
So I just wanted to talk about the stops on the one-ten. I know you guys are gonna change it over to the one-twenty-three. Thank, keep, thank you for keeping the route the same, the way it is. So there are stops on Roxbury Road and Wakayat, I don't know how you pronounce that road. The stops need to be placed on those intersections. There's a stop that's further down, but it's too far away from the other one. They had moved that stop further down on the other side of the BP. They need to move it down to that, in those, either one of those intersections. And I wanted to kind of talk about some expansion going into the Art Center, Buckhead Areas, Lenox, and Brookhaven. There's not enough routes over there. It's only like the one-ten and the five. They need some more routes in that area, and they need to kind of expand MARTA. I don't know if you guys are gonna be focused on that, but I think that should be a part of the plans. And Five Points. So they need a bus bay at Five Points. That should be in the plans for the renovations as well, because the buses just kind of park in this, on the streets, and then it kind of like, it's like everybody's just kind of like standing around, the buses are on the streets. If they had a bus bay, I think that would be more organized and more, you know, streamlined. Hope that's a part of the renovations for Five Points. And they need more station agents and supervisors at the stations. A lot of the state, the stations don't have any agents, they don't need supervisors, so if you need help with the breeze machines or the gates or anything like that, there's nobody there, and you're just pretty much on your own. They need someone at every single station that would mitigate, you know, going through the gates and fair, you know, fair jumping and stuff like that, because if you don't have, if the machines are not working, they don't take debit cards, they don't take cash, or they don't take whatever, you know, people are gonna, you know, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna jump the fairs, because they, they don't wanna be stuck there waiting for someone to get to the station. And I just wanna.
Thank you so much, and since you did bring up a bus issue, I wanted to let you know we're right at the end of the, the Bus Redesign Network program. So if you go to the MARTA website, there is a page that will say Bus Redesign Network, and there's a place that you can make comments there, and I believe our last system-wide meeting is tomorrow afternoon here at MARTA headquarters. I don't know if you're able to come back for that or not, but we are still collecting input on that, so if you go to the MARTA website and navigate, there's a place, there's a way to give input there.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
That concludes our public. Comment may have a motion to approve our minutes from the February thirteenth meeting. Anybody, anybody? Oh, oh, sorry. All right, a second, and if there's no discussion, everybody please vote. All right, the motion has passed, and we're gonna move to our board committee reports, and the first one we are going to do is the business management report with Mr. Pond.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for risk management information software as a service system, RFP P five zero five five three. Resolution B, authorizing the award of a contract for workers' compensation managed care organization, RFP five zero five four zero. Resolution C, authorizing the modification to contractual authorization for Wi-Fi data telecommunications services for MARTA buses, rail, and other equipment, P five zero zero five two. And Resolution D, authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for web tightened content filtering service for Wi-Fi mobility buses and rail services, P four five two two four. I request approval of these resolutions.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion and a second? And everybody please vote. All right, these items have been approved.
And Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Next, we will turn to the Planning and Capital Programs Committee, Mr. Zagabe.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and received the following briefing, Five Points Transformation Detour Plan Update. Madam Chair.
Yep, so nothing to vote on in this one, it was just a report?
Yep, so Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move to the Operations and Safety Committee. Mr. Worthy had to leave, so I will report that the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and received the following briefing, the Safety Event Debriefing Derailment, DR two four one two zero four. There's nothing to vote on, it was just that single report from that committee. And finally, we have the External Relations Committee with Ms. Jones.
Madam Chair, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and received the following briefings, Legislative Update, Marketing and Sales Update, Public Engagement Update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. So that is everything that came before our committees, and I believe Mr. Hunt has some items that came out of Executive Committee.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have, as briefed in executive session, we have four settlements, which I'm gonna be asking the board for motions on to approve. I'll read those now. The first, a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of four hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the lawsuit of Melvin Louders versus MARTA.
All right. Any further discussion on these matters, otherwise we have a vote? By hand, that is unanimous, thank you. Next item?
The next item is a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the lawsuit of Kenneth Jones versus MARTA.
All right, that was a motion by Juret, second by Hardage. May I have a vote by hand? That has also passed unanimously.
The next matter is a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in the workers' compensation claim of James Ward.
That was Mr. Juret, Ms. Williamson, have a vote by hand? That was unanimous?
And the last matter is a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred forty-two dollars in the workers' compensation claim of Greg Dixon.
Mr. Juret, Ms. Hardage, with a second. We have a vote? All right, that was unanimous as well. Is there anything else, Mr. Hunt?
Nope, those were the four matters.
All right, thank you. Any?
Ms. Dawkins?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Ms. Dawkins.
Good afternoon, Chair Ide, members of the board, and Mr. Greenwood. I'm before you today on other matters to bring forth the matter involving the organizing campaign with our non-represented supervisory employees and TWU union. As you know, we've had a number of briefings during executive sessions on multiple occasions, beginning as early as November of last year, leading into this year. Thank you for your time, your patience, and your persistence in getting to know about this campaign, understanding who TWU is as an AFL-CIO labor union organization, and the time and respect that you've given our employees as they've come before you on several occasions to share their positions about why they wish to be represented by TWU. occasions to share their positions about why they wish to be represented by TWU. We provided you background information regarding how long this campaign has been in place, the meetings that have been held with management, as well as members of the TWU leadership and our employees, and they have indicated they wish to come before you and request the opportunity to go to an election so they can determine if they have sufficient votes to be deemed the exclusive bargaining unit for this organization. And we have shared with you various things that we've learned as we've had discussions with TWU and followed them in the broad media, which includes things, as mentioned today, during the public comment about their advocacy as it relates to federal funding. So at this time, I present that information to you and submit to you that we seek your direction under your sole authority under the MARTA Act to determine if we will proceed to an election to possibly engage a unit, a union, an additional union here at MARTA.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, actions from the board? Ms. Powers?
I understand you're asking for some direction from us in the form of a resolution, so I will put forth that I move that we do not proceed to an election.
Is that a second, Mr. Pond, or a wish to speak? Okay, a second from Mr. Pond. Is there any further discussion or comment? All right, so we have a, a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Pond. Yes. See, it does not sound like there is any discussion, so we will vote by hand on this. Do you want to repeat your motion, Ms. Powers?
Sure, my motion is that we do not move forward with an election.
All right, that is what is before us. Is that a, a vote or a question, mister? Okay, all right, so we're gonna do a hand vote on this, on Ms. Powers to not move forward with an election. All right, that is, are you? Ms. Huff, can you count the yays? Okay, put the yays, put your hand down. Noes, raise your hand, please. And are there any abstentions? Okay, two abstentions. So that was six yeses, two noes, and two abstentions, correct? The noes were Mr. Zagabe and Ms. Pollock, I believe? Yep. Do you have that for the record? All right, thank you. So the motion to not move forward carries. Are there any other comments or items before the board? All right, the MARTA meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, man. Thank you.